Right? That looks really good, don't you think? Van sitting right next to her. Like, really. She likes to take it from time to time. You ready? I think we are timed. All right, welcome to the Linden City Council meeting of May sixteenth. Welcome. My name is Van Broderick. I am the Mayor Pro Tem as we excuse Mayor Lundberg tonight and also excuse Councilmember Van Cherry. With that, I don't know if anybody got an opening prayer. Daryl, would you give us an opening prayer and then I'll lead us in the pledge?
Our gracious Father in heaven, we pause at this time to thank thee for the many, many blessings that are bestowed upon us as individuals and as citizens of this great city. We're grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening and to participate on this council and pray that thy Spirit will be present, that we might make decisions that are in the best purpose of the city and their citizens. We're grateful for the association with one another and the opportunities that it presents as we weigh issues and discuss those things that are pertinent. And we always are grateful for all that thou provides us and we say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen, thank you. If everybody will rise and join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with a roll call. Jake, if you want to start us out at that end?
Jake Hoyt, present. Daryl McIlby, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Randy Powell, present.
Thank you. Any presentation or announcements from any of the council? Wasn't aware of any. All right, open session for public comment. Lincoln, it's probably going to just be you for anything that you may want to say that's not on the agenda. Well, thank you. We always have time for a comment like that, so we appreciate that. All right, we'll begin now with council reports. Jake, we'll put you down there at that end.
I'd love to. Couple of quick updates from PD. Appreciate Chief there in the back. This is National Police Week. As you know, we have our awards dinner tomorrow night from six to eight PM in, not at Castle, but here in the community center. Hopefully you all can make that. We had some Nova graduations this last week and then some final preparations for the Memorial Day program. Do we have a date, do we have a time for that yet, Chief?
Nine AM.
Nine AM, Memorial Day. So, those are the updates from PD. I see Heath there in the back. Any updates from Parks and Rec? Probably a thousand updates from Parks and Rec. Too many to list, they are so busy. I know as head coach of the title waves, the third and fourth grade team, that we are very much enjoying the soccer season. It's been, been really well done and even, you know, with Hannah leaving, I know that's a big, big boy to fill, so. How are we coming on lifeguards?
We're in great shape. We've got, knock on wood, we've got enough to get going and have a good, solid staff. So, we open in two weeks.
What's the plan with the Splash Tac here, the, the slide?
The grand opening. Alan and I were working on that today. We'll have something for you, probably Zerius tomorrow, to let you know. But it's going to be the Saturday of Memorial Day, and right at noon.
May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth, thanks Adam. And we'll have an invitation for each of you to come. We're, we're looking to do a ribbon cutting and see how that goes. I'll give you the all the details.
Van, Van has volunteered for the Splash Tac here, first, first rider. Actually, I heard Alan's already ridden it several times in sub-freezing temperatures, so good for him. Nothing else for me, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you.
Awesome. Planning Commission canceled last week. They didn't have any pertinent agenda items, so they will meet next week. Linden Days is still progressing. The, the committee is excellent. It was hard to not see Hannah take any assignments when we met a week, a couple of weeks ago and now she's, is she here still this week or is she's gone now? And how's the process on applications for, for her?
So, so we have appointed Alan Walker as our recreation superintendent and we were hoping that he would step into that and he finally accepted after some prodding. And so we are looking for an aquatics pool manager at this point in time, so.
Hard position to fill for his absence there, so.
Yeah, Alan's throwing a party over there now.
That's what all the cards are for.
It's his birthday.
He knows he will be pulling double duty here for a few weeks or months until we get that person up and running, so.
Knowing his nature, probably years, he'll probably be, have his fingers engaged in it, but that's great to hear about it, Alan. And that's all I have to report.
Just one item to report. Attended the Provo Bench Irrigation Company Meeting. It was held by Zoom this year. Probably the biggest note was replacing our president as Neil Winterton has left Orem City and we will keep filling that ripple effect through upcoming irrigation company meetings. The, the campaigning was rigorous. The debate was long and Juan is now the, the president.
You're laughing for him because of no more work.
Is president, sorry, president of?
The Provo Bench.
Provo Bench?
Provo Bench Irrigation Company. He hasn't shared that news with you yet. The, the person that's taken Neil's place with Orem just, because most of that responsibility is dealing with laterals in Orem, but he's new enough to Orem and new enough to laterals, he did not dare accept that responsibility. So Juan is the president and Steve Brown is the vice president, so. All right.
Okay.
Randy?
Thank you. Just a few things to report. Our senior center of the meals have now, our problem there only lasted one week, so we're back to Monday through Friday having the meals being provided by MAG and it's a full, however many sign up, there was a limit for thirty meals and so whatever the little panic was, it's over with now, so we're grateful for that. As far as our Linden Youth Council, we've had a really fun week of interviewing some amazing applicants. We've had fourteen and we've accepted thirteen of those. Not to say that the fourteenth might not have been welcome, but to all efforts, he's failed to return any phone calls, texts, or outreach of any kind, so by, by his own doing, I guess he's not going to be part of that, our, our youth council. But so it was really fun. We split up. I just need to brag a little bit on how phenomenal these young people are. We split up into two groups, but at one point we had, I think, six of us and one candidate coming in at the same time and they, they took the challenge of having to interview with that many adults really well. Adam and I had a couple of occasions to interview in the same room together and he and I both were ready to hire this one ninth grader, tenth grader on the spot. I don't know what job we could have put him into, but whatever it was, he would have fulfilled it excellent, to an excellent manner.
Yes.
So, we're really fortunate. Every single one of these kids are Linden residents. That was a requirement, they're not just attending a Linden school. They have to be Linden residents and they run the gamut and we are really excited to see what happens with this youth, these youth.
What's the age range?
They have to be ninth grade next year.
Nine through twelve.
Nine through twelve, okay.
We have all sorts of interests. Maybe you could share your, an experience that you might have?
Boy, it was all over. You'll, you'll meet these kids on the twentieth. We'll bring them in and introduce them. Yeah, broad range of interests and skills. Couple of kids who are homeschooled, several kids from various schools. So I'm, I'm under the assumption that they don't know each other either and so this will be good for, for just them to get to know each other better.
We've got one who's been a lobbyist, one who's been a disc jockey. We've got, I mean, it's just, it's all over there. And so like Adam says, they, I don't think many of these kids know each other and our first opportunity for anybody to see them will be at the memorial. We'll help you set up chairs or whatever. I'm not sure we've even discussed, I believe we've discussed a little bit of, of how to help with the memorial, but you'll see a little bit of them there, but they'll be publicly introduced on the twentieth like Adam said. So we're excited about that. I'll just say, I know you and I talked about the racing down the, down our state street. If anyone has ever noticed, late at night, there's a lot of RPMs going up and down state street and Saturday night it was for about two hours up and down. And so I guess we just need to have a game plan on maybe how to report that and how to get it, so it's not reported as an emergency or I don't know, so.
You can always call the non-emergency dispatch line.
I got really close. In fact, my husband and I, yeah, we almost just sat out there and thought, well, we'll just call from nine one one, or we called the non-emergency from there. I think Saturday night was just something extra going on, but it, I, my, my assumption is, is they start at two hundred South, suite of Rito when the light turns green, I think they take off and head to the next light, so. That's just my concerns about that and looking forward to that building coming down and there's nobody here from planning, but I'm looking for that building coming down out on, on the Norton property. Anybody else? It's just such a sight for sore eyes out there. I don't like that. So that's all I have.
That's how they put a fence up. That was good. Yeah, I know Mike indicated at our last meeting that they had at least done the fencing and they are working all, all of their state permits, so.
It certainly is a visible project and I've been asked many questions about it. People were pleased the fence went up in the short term. All right, thank you. Adam, administrators reporting?
Yeah, a quick question, Randy, on the youth council. So the email that the mayor sent and then Brittany added to her welcome letter said that immediately after they're introduced, they're going to have a welcoming together?
Yes, over at, over at the community center and the room's already been reserved.
So that's absent of you and the mayor then?
Yes. It's, it's with, it's, that's with the parent advisors.
Okay.
Yes, we will not be attended.
All right, I was not clear on that, so, okay.
So they'll leave here and then they'll go across. It's already been reserved and the, the three parent, adult advisors will be handling it.
Okay, thank you. I think several of these items that I have there in the administrator report have already been mentioned on the ribbon cuttings, Memorial Day, the police dinner. And then just an FYI, there's this summer kickoff party that's scheduled for June seventh at Friar Park. The Parks and Rec Department's putting on a kind of a community gathering there. We've got the farmer's market and the PG Chamber concert in the park on July seventh and then Linden Days coming up. Just an FYI, we had the Utah Valley Home Builders Association sent some Parade of Homes tickets, so there are eight here and there's four of you if you want to take two each. It's kind of a, if you are interested in that. And then, Van, just an FYI. So we met today our engineers, planners, Officer Campbell and Chief Brower to talk about the Oak Canyon Junior High traffic and Center Street traffic and some of the things that we could speak with the school district and the junior high about. And so we'll be sending another follow-up to that individual that keeps emailing everybody and he's, he's met with the chief and talked with the chief and we've heard similar complaints in prior years. Nothing this year that we're aware of, but we have had prior complaints. So we've actually gone through and spent some time today and inventoried some of the things the city has done in that general area, not just at the school, but Center Street and two hundred South. And when you add it all up, it's a lot. And so we'll, we'll document that and provide that to them. And then Kate Ross is actually moving from Linden Elementary, the principal, to Oak Canyon this next year. She's been great to work with, so I'm, I'm assuming that we'll get good support for some suggestions that we'll provide to the district on how they could redo their parking lot to help alleviate some of the congestion, so we'll keep working on that.
All right, thank you for that update and I know this last time they reached out, somehow I was fortunate enough and the mayor, so appreciate that follow-up. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Adam. Approval of the minutes. Any corrections?
I had an addition about some comments during the MOU that I've submitted to Kathy already, just an explanation of my feelings as far as my concern over numbers versus the type of units, things that I expressed that night, that I just wanted to be reflected in the minutes and then the quality of their product. So I've already submitted that to her for, in addition into that portion of the minutes.
All right.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously.
Sorry, one more thing, Van. Just as an FYI, as you brought up that memorandum of understanding, the developer has backed out on that, if you weren't already aware, so, okay.
Interesting. It was a vote that passed.
Yeah.
My understanding is it wasn't a unanimous vote and that was the reason for the backing out?
I think he was expecting more head over heels support, so.
And I was looking for better drawings, so I'm okay.
Yeah.
Wish everybody well.
I did talk to one of the architects over the week too. All right, no consent agenda items, so we move to number eight, a review and action, awarding of park tax mini grants. Heath, are you the one talking through this?
Yeah, I was hoping that I invited, excuse me, I invited the, the individuals from the PTA of Linden Elementary. That was a pretty big ask, what they've asked for, but I received three applications this year, Linden Elementary PTA. We received one from the Garden Valley Pipe Band who are currently in our building and then this new one from the United Angels Foundation. All three passed our, our litmus test for, for qualification, being a five oh one C three, major reflection of their program in Linden and giving back to Linden in some way. So the other two, my recommendation was to fund the other two first and then see what we had for Linden Elementary and it still came out to be nine thousand dollars for their garage, for their, I just lost the name of it. What do they call, is it just the, is it arts garage? Li, just the Linden Garage?
Yeah.
Which for a classroom set of, of Chromebooks to do art. So I did some research on, on the programs that they use for art, math, and science and they do use a lot of art programs, art development, digital art programming. And so I felt like that also qualified pretty well within the scope of what we've done. We, the city has, they've been a grant recipient seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, so they have, they've certainly been able to take advantage of this, this program. And in fact, they still talk about the, the ukulele set that we bought them the first, first year and they've all got a old ratty Linden Park Tax sticker on the back of them and, and that's all owned by the PTA. And now because of this, I understand there is, one of our PTA people has been hired as an art teacher. So I think that we've done some really good work there. So that is a large ask. It did fit with the other two being funded first. I felt like it, it fit pretty well and if you have interest in that, I can have the teacher in the Linden Garage come explain a little bit more. I invited her, but I didn't follow up with her today, so maybe she's forgotten. That's what we've got. So we've got fifteen thousand dollars in the budget. Often we don't usually, haven't spent fifteen thousand, but this year the request would be for the full amount.
Heath, I, I've got two children at Linden Elementary, been part of those music programs. They're very good to market the, the park tax. They're very, you know, they, they talk about it. It's hoping that we go to the parent-teacher conference and they should, they have those instruments out. They're, they're very much, I think, appreciative and showing, hey, this is where it came from. So a, anyway, it's good to see that and it makes me feel a little, you know, a little bit better about saying, yeah, we'll give it back to them again if they're, they're at least appreciative and recognizing, doing some good PR for that park tax.
Just as Adam mentioned, Kate Ross has been a great supporter and now she's going to the junior high, but she's, she's always been out in front of that and writing a letter of support saying, I, we won't be able to do this program. It's not funded through the district, so that's how they qualify. They're their own five oh one C three organization. They own that equipment.
Right.
And then they've been using their PTA members to teach the music programs and some teachers, so that's the request. I, I, I'd be interested to see how you all feel about it and if that's too much of an ask, they'll take whatever they can get, she said.
Typically, how much has Linden asked, asked for quite a bit or, I mean, a lot of years?
Yeah, it's been about between five and seven for about five years in a row. Yeah. The instruments that they bought with their xylophones and, and all the, I don't even know the names of some of those things that I presented last year. Yeah, that's stuff that is going to be well-used by a lot of kids. So they've, they've had their share of funding for sure. It's been really good.
And with Principal Ross having done such a wonderful job and now taking her relationship with Linden City and to Oak Canyon, Oak Canyon doesn't, I've, I've never seen them apply actually for our teacher grants. I'm assuming she's going to spread the good news that we, of what we do, maybe up at the junior high and asking teachers there, so.
We hope so.
Yes, and hopefully we get a little bit more participation with some of those, but so perhaps that Parent Teacher Association will be also asking.
They have one up there, I would assume. I do not know.
Well, I assume they would too.
Every year I ask Aspen and, and some of these other schools to apply, but it's really a matter of who's on the board.
Correct.
Not even the president. Marty Weber has been applying since the start and she's been the president for a little while and she keeps going through, but she never misses this because of the music program and the, the arts that it provides. So it really depends on, you know, who's going to submit, so.
That's a question I have for you, Heath, is how well-known are the, is the park grant options available to people in our city?
In the last ten, well, it hasn't been ten years, it's been eight years since we've been doing this. I've had maybe five only that were non-qualifying groups because they didn't have a, a presence here in Linden. So I, I contact all the schools and the PTAs and let them know. I put it on Facebook several times to circulate it through. I put it on our webpage for recreation and then it's word of mouth, but all the schools know about it and they qualify strangely enough if they have a PTO or PTA that has their five oh one C three. But other, I've had a lot of phone calls from people who say, I want to, I want to get funding for the dance group in Utah County or, well, do you do anything here? Well, we're just, we're just looking for fundraising and our rural state. So I don't know if it's real super well-known. We have the same applicants. This is a new applicant this year that we've got for looking for a thousand dollars for, for space for our program. So we get them, we get one or two anew a year.
Good to know, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, concerns?
I'm pretty comfortable with it.
And then I think we may be ready for a motion.
Is it okay?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the park tax mini grants as presented.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
And I'll say thank you to, from them too, I'm sure, that all these organizations. The Pipe Band, if you haven't been by on Thursday and listened to the, the doors are open and they just let er rip. It's really fun to listen to those guys.
Eighteen, eighteen months on our park tax?
Yeah. Yep. So that's right, that and that comes up not this November, but next November's ballot.
Next year, yep.
So it's got to go on the ballot any year.
It'll be in like April, I believe, that we have to send notice to the state that we intend to put it back on the ballot and so it's coming up.
Luckily in some of our neighboring towns who had seven years, like American Fork is, theirs passed and so hopefully people are seeing the value of that one-tenth of a penny sales tax, so.
I anticipate we'll be putting together a plan to inform citizens.
Yeah, so we can send out a fact sheet type of thing, but we can't.
Right.
Quote promote.
Yep.
It was the first time, right?
Yeah, so.
All right, thank you, Heath. All right, item number nine, a review and action, street lighting request at forty North and four hundred East.
So this was a citizen-initiated street lighting request. They went through, we have a, an informal process. It's an app, basically an application form that citizens can submit. So this was turned in for this location. Our city engineers reviewed the site and asked for some more information. We actually had signatures from some neighboring residents and then they prepared this map that's in your staff report on page forty-five that shows the streetlight location as proposed just on the corner of forty North and four hundred East.
I loved that map, by the way.
Yeah, that's helpful. So the green thumbs up, everybody that was in favor that signed this petition and, and their addresses that the engineers mapped out. And so technically forty North is a private street. However, we felt like this is, this is light oriented on the public roadway on four hundred East and, and we felt like that probably meets the intent of, of having a public light at this location. And so the engineers received a, a quote from Rocky Mountain Power. They're estimating this would cost about three thousand five dollars and we have ten thousand dollars budgeted in our account for street lighting requests. They are recommending approval of this.
Have we received any other applications recently for a street light?
We haven't. The last one we did was that one that was a few years ago up in your general neighborhood, so.
I will say this is a property I'm very familiar with, having lived across the street for over twenty years right there. The listening or reading the reasons why they're wanting that, I guess it's the house to the north that perhaps has blocked some sort of light seepage. My thought is, is with Center Street going in, there's going to be light there on that corner somewhere nearby. Is that not going to be enough to cast?
It, it may be, but technically this meets the requirements on, on an intersection there on the corner and so, yeah, I don't know yet which corner that Center Street light will go on.
I'm assuming all the thumbs ups, they weren't compelled to put their thumb up on this.
Not by the city. These were petitions that were submitted by the resident.
So all the thumbs ups are, their signatures are on that petition?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm not opposed to, just having.
Right.
I will just give a little anecdote about, a lot of years ago, we lived in California and we lived, our home was right underneath a street light. My husband got out into his truck one morning early and noticed that his stereo system was all missing and the officer came and said, well, we, we pointed out, we live under a street light and the officer said, well, nobody has to hold the flashlight then when they vandalize your cars. And so I'm not sure how much that's going to take away from them stealing the, I mean, so that's a little tongue in cheek, but still true nonetheless. I don't know how much it will help with the vandalism or the theft that they've received there, but that was just my little thought for, I don't know how much that'll help, but I'm sure it will make them feel warm and fuzzy, I guess.
I'd make a motion to approve the street lighting request on forty North, four hundred East as proposed. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, that's a unanimous one. Just wanted to be sure. All right, item, item ten, a public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Thank you. Got that too there, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in a public hearing to discuss amending fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three proposed budget. Kristin, our presenter.
Yes. Thank you. All right, so I'll start out with the budget amendment for the twenty-two fiscal year. Lots of cleaning up changes and so I didn't make a note for every one, but most of it's just cleaning up, like we're getting more revenues than anticipated, changes in expenditures at the year, end of the year. And so I did make some notes on there. I don't know if you want me to go through them all or let me just ask, did, did you have any questions on any of it?
Right after one twenty-three AM, I looked at it.
I hope much later after one twenty-three AM.
Hollow Park, we didn't do the hundred and thirty thousand. Hollow Park, we didn't do the hundred and thirty thousand.
That is being postponed, right, so it will be in the twenty three fiscal year.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there's a, more projects that are being approved nowadays and sometimes they fall off of the radar. And so with Chase being here now, he's helping to bring things, you know, keep, keep things in the, on the radar. And so, yeah, so hopefully the things that are budgeted for twenty three will get done, yeah.
Did our IT employee accept, has that been, have we moved forward with that?
Yes.
And that's part of the budget?
Yes, and so he will start in the first week of June.
Perfect. I had a question, where did it go? It's escaped me. Oh, our insurance premium, so they went up about seven percent. I know at one point we had locked in for three years. Where are we at now on that?
We're in our fourth year.
We're in our fourth year, so.
So we expect next year we will go out to the market again.
That, that was my question, if, if we were gonna bid that out a little bit.
Go through all of that bidding process and see what we get, so.
Okay. Would, did they fix it for three years, is that what it was? Or did they?
EHP held their, I wanna say that they held their rate for maybe, was that two years ago?
Um, I don't think they ever held it. That they were giving us good rates so that we, and if we would stay with them, but they were still increasing it. But it was under ten percent increase, it was very good.
With something to it that lowered the risk.
Component. I, I remember what you're remembering.
Awesome.
That wasn't, that wasn't a very good response, I'm sorry. But we're beyond that window, how's that?
No, that's, that's perfect.
But yeah, when we had, had looked at it with the insurance consultants, they came back and had priced everything out and it was within, we're typically, every year, we're within that five to seven percent. And of an increase, even when we've switched, we've been similar in those rates. And so we felt like where we were under that seven percent, it was worth not messing with everybody's insurance and staying with that, so.
I'm sure employees appreciate continuity with the same company, so I hope they continue to give good rates.
Yeah.
But that we'll look out for the best interests of everybody. Any other questions then on the budget amendment notes?
No.
Up that top tab up there, it has the fee, uh, I think the next one over.
Well, let's go to, yeah. Okay, so if there's no questions on the proposed, I mean, on the budget amendment for twenty two fiscal year, then I will move on to the, to the proposed budget. All right, so, um, a lot of things still looking the same from when I brought the draft last month. And the, just looking at inflation, so in March it was eight point five, in April eight point three from, over the last twelve months. And this is the proposed budget tonight, and then we'll have the final budget on June twenty. And the fee schedule changes, we've got more fee schedule changes, mostly with utilities. Let's see, sorry, didn't, I think I might have scrolled too much. All right, okay, so Juan has done a, our public works director has done a analysis of the utility rates for water, sewer, and stormwater, uh, and groundwater pumping. And so his recommended changes are a three percent increase for water, and so those are the rates with the three percent increase. And then for sewer, it was six percent, for stormwater, three percent. Groundwater pumping were available and that's out at Anderson Farms so that they could have a basement. And so the water's being pumped and then added to the, their secondary water system out there. And so that's the charge to cover the expenses for that. And then I've done a, an analysis of the garbage and recycling rates. And with that, I am proposing a six percent increase because the, there's different aspects to the, to the garbage and recycling collection in London. We have Republic Services that charges us like per can. Then they also charge us a fuel surcharge, which is variable and very variable right now. It's shot up a lot, probably like five times the amount that it was six months ago. And, and I looked at Rocky Mountain Diesel pricing, which is what they use, and kinda seeing, you know, what's, what's changing. Cause they, they look at it every week and, and the graph is very vertical. So, and taking that into account, and then another piece of this is North Point Solid Waste Transfer Station. They're increasing the tipping fees per ton for, for taking the, our garbage there. And so in looking at that to cover our costs, and that's all we try to do, is cover the costs, those costs. So we're not trying to build a fund balance, we don't have capital that we're having to maintain. So we just need to be sure that we can cover the costs in that fund. And so that in, in my evaluation, that is what we'll do it. We are actually charging residents for recycling less than what Republic is charging us, so that we can encourage recycling. And then we, we make up for that with the second can, um, charge.
Kristin, are we seeing an increase in acceptance of the recycling can each year, or is it?
I don't have a feel for that, I mean, I, I've.
We looked at it last year and it, and it continues to trend upward.
Yeah.
And we made some changes to our utility fee a couple of years ago, or our utility application where.
It was an opt out.
Yeah, it's basically people have to check that they're not going to get a can and, and so.
That's for all new addresses?
For new ones, yeah, new accounts.
For new, not just new addresses, but yeah, new accounts, yeah.
Um, and I wanna say, wow, it was a year or so ago when we looked at that, I wanna say it was, it was over fifty five, fifty six percent in that range. And more than half.
Definitely, it's over half.
Yeah, so that's positive.
Just for curiosity, just so you know, I own a townhome in Washington City and they charge for a recycling can whether you want one or not.
Oh.
I just thought that was interesting.
Wow.
I would appreciate at some point in the near to far future, whatever, some update on how our recycling is being recycled. What is it actually being recycled in a way that is, is proper for recycling? So I don't know, from the recycling company to.
That's Republic, and so I'm happy to ask Reese DeMille to come in and, and meet with you and discuss that. And I asked him just recently, there's a billboard for whatever reason on the freeway just off of sixteen hundred North that says recycling is a myth. And go to this website to find out why. And so I, I was just curious and asked him if he'd seen it and he's just like, yeah, I have no idea what they're talking about. But they have a multi million dollar facility that they haul all of this to. There's some videos online that you can take a look at, I can ask him to send those links. Shows how they process it and where it goes and.
I think it's just a good thing to go through every once in a while and it's been a while since I've seen one of those.
Okay. It has changed, when I was on the council four years ago and I was on the, on the committee down there, the, the board, uh, they had challenges with transitioning to doing that. And if there was any contamination at all in the recycle, they would just dump it all into normal, normal.
Yeah.
And I think they've made great improvements since then. And Mike Bencherry could probably update us when he goes to his next board meeting and get that information.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll check with Reese and have him come meet with us. So just as an FYI, while, while we're talking about this, we have had some inquiries in the past about green waste bins. And this last year, most of the places that accepted that have started to reject that, they're not able to process so much. And so Lehigh and Orem were the two cities that actually made an announcement that said, you can still order a green waste can, green waste can, but just know that it's going to the landfill. And so they actually put that out as public statements that this is a way to get rid of it, but it's just a cheaper garbage can really, so.
And it's still, I mean, it's still a cheaper garbage can, but it has to maintain only green waste in it, but it's still going to the landfill.
It's just going to the landfill, yeah, and I don't know if they are checking to see what's in it, to be honest, Randy, so.
I'd rather not tell anybody.
Well, we want to know.
Yes.
So. I, I would like to make a comment here, I don't know if you paid attention, that Juan made recommendation, our public works department, as it's come in-house, not an outside engineering fee. Software that's been approved in the past. Juan's walked me through that procedure where he's tracking data and I, I feel really, really good about that and that it's here. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody kinda caught that.
Yes.
That's not an outside engineering firm now, it's all in-house, so.
Yeah, that was about a thirty five thousand dollar a year study before, when I was with a private consultant, so.
I spent several hours with Juan a month, a few months ago, and he walked me through all that as well. And I was incredibly impressed that, first of all, he had the capability to understand all of that, but it was, it was quite dynamic and impressive.
Really, really great spreadsheet he has, very impressive.
Glad you guys have seen it too.
It's, it's been great to work with Juan, he's very organized and well planned and it's, as a finance director, it's been great to work with him. Yep. Um, let's see, and then we are deleting the SWIP sign deposit. That's a, a sign that developers had to have at their site and we would ask for a thirty five dollar deposit and then refund it when they turn the sign back in. And I don't know that that was necessary, so.
Most people provide their own, don't they?
I'm not sure how it, we, we just weren't doing it yet.
You have to buy it from somewhere and then put it up.
Just, just FYI, if you have residents ask about, we are, I mean, we are proposing the utility rate increases, but they are not at inflationary levels. So we are below the inflationary rates that we think we could justify, but we're covering project costs and still trying to keep a healthy fund balance for unexpected emergencies and so.
Yep.
Yes, if you have eight percent inflation and we raise three percent, it's not hard to figure out the math there.
Yeah. Yep, and so just looking at the impact on a, an average utility bill that, where the family, if, there's a family that lives below North Union Canal, has unmetered pressurized irrigation, uses eight thousand gallons with their one inch culinary water meter and one garbage can and one recycle can. Their monthly bill would increase about six dollars a month. All right, and now looking at the proposed budget, um, where the money comes from. We've got almost twenty eight million in revenues coming into the city. And this is net of fund balances and transfers, so this is revenue coming in. And sales tax is a pretty good chunk of it, like one fourth of it, and also utility charges.
Just as an FYI with the property tax, um, in two thousand twelve, when I started as the administrator, property tax was eighteen percent of our city revenues. It's continuing to become a smaller and smaller portion of our budget portfolio. And I know that you heard some of these other cities are looking at actions to hold those property tax rates from year to year. And so that's something that we can explore if, if needs be. There's never a good time to do that, I know, but just an FYI, that continues to become a smaller and smaller portion of our budget as the most stable source of our income, so.
Right, it's, property taxes are set up to be revenue neutral, so as values increase, the rate decreases to keep our revenue the same. But our expenses don't work that way, so our expenses increase inflationary or just with the growth of the city. And so that's, yeah, so it's becoming less and less of, of a pie piece. Okay. Then looking at the citywide expenditures, um, operations is almost half of the budgeted expenditures. And again, this is net of fund balances and transfers. Capital, eight and a half million, and personnel's eight and a half million.
Two million of that, or two point five of that capex is the water projects. Remind me what pro, water project that is, that's such a big.
It's, it's multiple, so it's, um, like the biggest part of it is the center, no, sorry, the Canal Drive water line replacement. And so that's on Canal Drive from Center Street to six hundred North, so a long stretch on, on Canal Drive. So that's one point six just in itself. Then there's three generators that Juan is getting for backups for Wells one and three and the eight thirty five east booster pumps. And those are each about a hundred and twenty one thousand. And then there's Center Street from Main Street to two hundred East. That is three hundred and thirty five thousand, but we just found out today, um, the master plan has come back and the, they're actually recommending that within the next ten years, that line is upsized. And so Juan's like, oh, I'm glad that we found out before we started the project, so we can just upsize it now. And so we're working on, on that so that impact fees can cover that upsizing part, so.
Financing on that is coming from fund balances, which we have a pretty healthy fund balance there, and then looks like a transfer from the general fund as well.
So the transfer is, um, the, is from.
The utilities administration side, or?
Um, no, it, it's one point three million transfer, so that is actually the ARPA funds. And that's gonna help pay for the secondary water meter, which is actually in operations. It's not a capital expense, even though it's huge, it's two point eight million. And that's just what we will get accomplished, what we're expecting to get accomplished in the twenty three fiscal year. It will carry over into the twenty four fiscal year to finish up. So it's a, it's a big project.
So essentially a hundred percent of the capital expenditures for water are financed by fund balance?
Correct.
Which speaks to.
And, and revenues, the utility charges.
Right. Perfect. Which speaks to our strategy of raising utility rates and not having to raise debt. It's good.
All right. So looking at personnel costs that are budgeted, um, so the merit, there's a merit increase for one step on the pay scale, which is about two, and two point six percent. And that is conditioned on employee evaluation scores and it would be effective January first of twenty twenty three. And, and we can, we'll put it in the budget, but we usually come back in December and just make sure that the economy is doing well, that everything is coming in as budgeted and, and make sure that you're still okay with that. And so the, that increase is a hundred and ten thousand dollars and then you can see the breakout by fund. And then just to look at the CPI, um, so in the past, we've looked at the CPI from March to February and that average annual change, so, you know, like when you're looking at the change from February to February and then from March to March, and then you average all of that out, was five point seven percent. Then as I mentioned, in March, it was eight and a half percent, April was eight point three percent. And so just looking at added twelve month average from April to April, that's six point six percent, so you can see how that's trending. But we, thank you very much for approving a COLA already, um, effective January eighth of six percent. And so we're not proposing a COLA for July first twenty two, so. And then, yep, as Jake had mentioned earlier, insurance premiums increasing almost seven percent for medical, dental is five percent. And so overall, it's sixty three thousand dollar increase in, in the twenty three fiscal year.
Kristin, can I ask a question on the COLA for July first? Do we have a general sense, Adam, in, in staff, of how is that being received with the employees? Do we have a general sense, Adam, in, in staff, of how is that being received with the employees?
That, that we aren't proposing one?
Doing that, where they received it in January, but they're, they're typically conditioned to get it in July.
Yeah, and I, I think it was, it was well-promoted, as this is an early COLA, that instead of July, we're trying to get it out there earlier to help retain some people, to help people pay their groceries and gas, and so I, I think that went over well, is my impression.
And it's larger than, they recognize it's larger than it's been in the past.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that was well-received, and, and I have not had any inquiries about another COLA, and so I, I think that's understood.
Good.
Can you jump back to the graph, just one prior? Just wanna get, or, sorry, two prior, just a, a heads up, I know there were some questions in some previous meetings about the personnel expenses and adding some new positions. Just wanted to make a comment on the personnel, where we're at twenty-seven percent of our expenditures budget. We've looked back to the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen fiscal year and, and gone through some of those, and, and we're right in the middle, we're staying pretty consistent, it's been as low as twenty-five percent, depending on expenditures, up to thirty percent, um, so we're right at our average amount. We've held steady for about ten years at about twenty-seven percent of our expenditures budget, and so, just an FYI, that, the expenditures amount has increased, so it's, it's growing, but as a percentage of our budget, it's held fairly constant, and so I just wanted to identify that.
So, looking at new positions, um, we have full, a new full-time streets technician in Public Works, and new part-time code enforcement officer in community development, a, a new part-time recreation coordinator. And so those three positions we've talked about in the past already. Some new changes in this proposed budget is, um, a second part-time clerk at the front desk. The city's growing, the responsibilities from, for, like, the utility clerk, the accounts payable clerk, the treasurer, um, are growing, and it's becoming more difficult for them to stop what they're doing and answer phones or, um, help customers, and, um, seeing a few more errors because of distractions, and so we're hoping to have two part-time people at the front desk, so one in the morning and one in the afternoon, um, and then, um, and not overlapping, but, but starting, ending, ending and starting at the same times to cover lunches. So we're looking at, like, from nine to one, and then from one to five, to, to help out at the front desk. And so that's.
So we have a current opening there, our current.
Current receptionist has given notice, and, and she actually gave notice two weeks ago, and is being very kind to continue coming, not at her current, not, not at the previous twenty hours a week, but as she can, to continue helping out, um, and then she'll come and help train the new employees, so that's, that's good.
Is her leaving because she wanted full-time?
No, no, she actually wanted less time, she's, just wants to be, she, yeah, she wants to have more family time, so. Yep, and then, uh, we're adding, um, positions in water sewer and storm water for operators one, two, and three positions. This is not increasing the number of employees, this is just, um, so that we can hire employees where they are qualified, based on their certifications, and then as they get more certifications, allow us to promote those employees, um, to reward them for the certifications that they're getting, so.
And the acquire of those, of those employees is difficult, given the market and the pay range in which we're offering it, that, from what I understand, so this is a, quite a challenge.
Yeah, and so we had done this previously in the streets depart, or division, and, um, neglected to do this for water sewer and storm, so we're getting this added to that. Any questions on these new positions?
The part-time recreation coordinator, that's, that you mentioned that it's a new position. I'm assuming that's the new person that we hire for Hannah, will, that person will work under Hannah?
Um, so this position will work under Alan.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I, yeah, I knew that, sorry.
Yes, and so, so there will be, there will be two part-time recreation coordinators, so Balin is our current, currently in that position, so he'll have another counterpart there, and so, yeah.
Are we, this is off the subject, but Alan, I know he's worked way more hours a week on average than he's required to, is, are we gonna find a challenge there? Find a qualified person, and then are they gonna be able to fulfill all the, all the needs of the Aquatic Center?
We hope so.
Okay.
Yeah. Alan works like crazy, and, um, he, he does a wonderful job, and I, how can I say this nicely? Sometimes he's his own worst enemy, he, he's creating new programs and new events and new things and new avenues, and it's, it's making it a little more difficult for him, and so we've talked with him about some of that, and, and we've also provided a lot more help at the pool, um, so he has four or five assistant managers that are currently employed there, where just a few years ago, there wasn't anybody, so, we're trying to help quell that.
Uh, moving on to capital expenses, these are pretty much, these are the same, there was no changes from the last draft. So this is in the general fund, any questions on those? Then, moving on to, um, the other funds. One thing I wanted to point out is, that's the fifty thousand for the monument entry sign is what's in this proposed budget, but we just received word today that, um, a request to increase it to sixty thousand and for the final budget, um, in looking at the resolution, um, for the one that was bid, it wasn't as great, and so they wanted to, to improve the resolution for that monument sign, and so that's, that would change it to sixty thousand.
And that's digital, correct?
Correct.
Which means there needs to be an adjustment on the.
Sign ordinance?
Sign ordinance.
Yes.
That's good, because I want a digital sign down the street.
You have to declare those conflicts. That, that is a point we discussed before, is a point of discussion that will come about, that we don't know how it will go.
Yep, and I do wanna point out that that is part of the State Street RDA, so those are restricted funds that are available for that project, so that's how that will be funded.
Do you know how much fund is available in that area?
Um, so we're not collecting money on that any longer, um, but we have a healthy fund balance, but off of the top of my head, I cannot remember it.
Uh, yeah, I wanna say it's a hundred and fifty plus, is that fair?
Um, and I was wanting to say three hundred, so, that's, yeah.
I think we're, we're okay.
We can add up for future conversation perhaps about what we might do with our vinyl fencing, and maybe do something that's out of that budget, to make it something that's lasting and durable, still has the continuity of a little bit of country flavor without being the whole length of our campus, uh, just some thoughts.
Yeah, and durable.
Yeah, durable and not vinyl, so. Something beautiful, long-lasting.
Um, and so you can see, here's the park impact fee expenditures, and there's the hollow park, thirty thousand that was moved forward.
Um, just an FYI on the road, capital improvements, so we have this one-point-three-seven million for maintenance projects in the upcoming year, and in addition to that, we have a fund balance then projected at the end of the year of over four million, some of that is being held for the future Center Street improvements, those are pretty substantial, um, but, um, just an FYI. So we have a, a very healthy, growing fund balance in addition to putting this much in, so.
Okay, and then moving to enterprise funds, um, we've discussed the water project, and again, this is the, a list of capital projects, so it does not include the secondary water meters that's in our operations, but I do wanna point out two-point-eight million for that, 'cause that's a hefty one-time operation cost. Okay, so, any questions?
Was there a new figure on the flow meter in the sewer area for Orem and Linden?
Um, it's that hundred thousand right there on sewer fund.
Yeah, what did we just see, that something was more substantial than we were thinking?
Oh, with this, with the facility, that they ended up not doing, that we were going to have to help with the sewer facility and upgrade there?
I don't.
With Orem.
It's a big number, so it's not this.
Right, right, it's not in here, uh, we were, they were gonna finance.
You're talking about the Orem sewer, sewer plant upgrade, sorry, um, we have not heard anything more from them on that. I will, Neil was in that position, and so my assumption is that may have been tabled until they can pick that back up, but I'll follow up on that, Van, thank you.
And so then, here's the, the fund balance is really, really small, but just to point out that we, um, the ending general fund balance after all of these things is twenty-seven-point-six percent, and, um, we can go up to thirty-five percent, but I found that if I budget close to that, then by the end of the year, I'm.
We're in trouble.
Right, we're too close to it, or over, so, so I, I think this is a good, good place, yeah.
Good problem to have.
Yep.
You've seen, watched the economy this year, you know, things are definitely slowing down, and so, you know, being less dependent, more, more dependent on some more volatile sources of income, like sales tax revenue, I think it's even more imperative for us to keep an eye on that economy and see what things are doing. But, I, you know, I, I, I was so impressed when COVID hit, and we had the exercise where we said, if we have to cut, what can we cut, and then we didn't have to, so, um, I, I think we're doing a good job. As I've reviewed this budget, I think we're in a great place, that even if we do enter into a light recession as, as the Fed is calling it, so, great job.
Thank you for everything, Kristen.
I bet we got a ton of public comment, though, on this one. Chase, Lincoln?
Good.
Do we still have that, that?
Kristen does.
Okay, yes.
You guys were just agreeing earlier, she's doing outstanding.
Well said.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, so any, any other questions, anything I didn't cover that you wanna know more about?
You make this painful thing very less, much less painful, Kristen, you really do.
Just a reminder, by state law, we're required to send out mailed notice on our enterprise fund transfers, and we are transferring no money from this.
That, that was this fiscal year, so we will advertise for it.
Or are you carrying forward on the sewer, we're, we're not doing that again?
So we are going to do a transfer in the twenty-three fiscal year.
I misunderstood you earlier on that.
This is where we get our most questions from the public, is what, how, where, why we do transfers.
And by most, that would be one or two.
Yeah, so typically, we've done that through a postcard, goes out to all residents and businesses, any utility accounts, and then we're required then to follow up after the budget's adopted, to say, okay, we told you about it, now here my, how much got approved, so there's two notices that go out. Um, and that has to be done as a separate agenda item, and we just have to take public comment, so just a reminder on that, but.
We've done it a few times, we'll do it again.
Yeah.
We'll field those questions.
So do we need to close the public hearing?
Yes, would you like to?
Motion to so do, is that what came here?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll make a motion that we, uh, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-two-two-nine, amending the fiscal year budget and fee schedule and adopting Linden City Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-three proposed budget as presented.
Motion?
I'll second that.
And a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That was unanimous. All right, thank you, thank you for that presentation and all your work. And I'll just say again, I talked about one earlier, love our staff, love our employees, love our department heads, just.
Incredible.
Pleased as we can be, so, thank you, and that goes for all, and, so.
Yep.
Pass that about.
Mayor, I'll move to recess to the Linden City Council meeting, oh, I'll remove to recess to the Linden City Council meeting and convene as the Linden City RDA.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do now go into a roll call vote?
Yep.
So by name and.
Jake Hoyt, aye and present, whichever one it is.
I go be present.
Van Broderick, aye.
Randy Powell, aye.
This is a, this is a yea or nay, a yes or no, and aye or nay to go into the RDA, so, yeah. So.
Unanimous, it looks like.
An RDA meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
You okay, Kathy? All right.
So that's why it's an a, yea or nay.
So approval of the RDA minutes from April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
I have no changes, anybody else? I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passed unanimously. We're ready to go into a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in a public hearing to amend fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget and adopt the twenty-twenty-three proposed budget for RDA.
Actually don't have an amendment for the RDA for twenty-two fiscal year, um, so in looking at the twenty-three fiscal year budget, that's the same as last draft, no changes, so.
All right, any public comment?
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All right.
So, would you like a motion on this one then?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm not quite sure, um, and make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-two-four-RDA, not amending, accepting, what would, what terminology would you like, accepting?
I, I think adopting the fiscal year.
Adopting the fiscal twenty-twenty-three RDA proposed budget.
Did we get that right?
Yep, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous.
I'll move to adjourn the Linden RDA meeting, and we convene the Linden City Meeting there, Pro Tem, Roger.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carried unanimously, we are back in our regular city council meeting, and we are going to item number twelve. This is a review and action item on a revocable license agreement.
So, this is, this is a little bit unique, typically when we do things, um, within some certain utility corridors or ditches or canals or things, we're trying to get an easement. Shadow Mountain Industrial Properties was willing to grant us a revocable license, which basically just gives us permission to go in and do some work along this, this waterway right here, just a little bit east of the freeway and south of, this is the Anderson Farms Development. Our new lift station is just off the screen right over there. So, the city actually has a stormwater detention basin, um, some of these green lines shows those lines that come south and west flows into this basin, we are looking at enlarging this, we bid this out, it's probably been four or five years ago, and it was pretty expensive. Juan has worked out an agreement with Shadow Mountain where we can haul the material from here and line the side of this ditch to kind of create a, a little bit of a roadway with some of that fill material, uh, and then deposit more fill out here that they will need in the future, and then he's gonna clean up the ditch, get rid of all of these Russian olives that are down in there, so it's, it's a win-win, we have a, a better place to put it, and then we will do this work in-house, so they have a loader and an excavator they're gonna use, and as they have time, go do that piecemeal, and so. And so this license then allows us to gain access and doesn't grant us a permanent easement, but we expect when they develop and the site improves and they subdivide it, that would be the time we would turn that into a permanent easement, so.
What is that ditch called, what name is that, do you know?
I'm gonna say this is part of the main ditch.
Main ditch.
I think, and so the mod, a lot of the flow comes out kind of central and north Linden, and then quite a bit from Pleasant Grove into this area. All the stormwater drainage, not all, most of the stormwater drainage off of Geneva Road, and some even off the freeway goes into this ditch, so.
How long did this agreement go?
I think it is until, the termination is until they can terminate it on their own or until I think they sell it.
Didn't remember seeing that in there, I may have missed it. But either party can terminate it?
Yeah, it says shall terminate upon the earliest to occur, either the date in which they convey or transfer the property, so if they sell it, or any notice with or without cause from Shadow Mountain to the city or whenever Shadow Mountain tells us to, so.
Was that difficult for him to acquire?
I don't know the answer to that. And so I know this is something Juan's been working on for a while, but I don't know how long that's taken him, so. We're we're comfortable with this, this is a good win-win, so.
Any other?
Questions or comments?
I move to approve the revocable license agreement between Shadow Mountain Industrial Properties and Linden City as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That's unanimous and carries.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor?
Thank you, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'm not seconding any.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries, we are adjourned, thank you.
Good meeting.
Okay, this has been like, I don't know, six, seven months, it's never been done this early.
Vote vote Van Broderick for mayor, maybe, I'm just kidding.
Just an FYI, Juan's watching on YouTube, he said that ditch is the industrial park ditch, and it collects water from Pheasant Brook Drainage, and the Gilman Ditch down Gilman Lane also reaches this and drains into that, so, just a heads up.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you, Juan.
I have a question, we need to get your Mary Aiserson up there on the wall, that in the process.
Oh.
We've got one meeting on the.
We can get his updated one up there.
I just need a different rain, it's gonna be, I've killed her now.
Well, one thought is we have the old pit, she was up, and then as we go down, we don't have to do that.
That's true.
And then another question, Adam, do you know in the sixteen hundred north from State Street, the freeway that started leaving back to you?
They're still in the environmental phase, and I think that that whole environmental process won't finish until the end of this year. And then my assumption after that, these things run pretty slow, is it's probably another eighteen months or two years before they even do anything. Yeah, Orem City, before that road transferred to UDOT, Orem had actually acquired some of the properties, and so they're taking those down as they have funds. But I don't think the state has funded the construction yet, only the environmental, so.
I've wondered why someone with a president or a manager bond, their surroundings, I thought it would happen now.
So a question, normally when you call for a vote, when the mayor does, the council votes, but she doesn't, is that correct?